Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May 23rd, and the time is 1:00 PM. Has the front lobby been cleared? Yes? We're clear? Okay. We are here today for our school board briefing meeting today. Welcome, everyone. Member Patrica is going to be joining us remotely today. I believe she is currently on the line.
Yes, sir, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay. Superintendent have any comments or changes for the agenda?
No comments nor changes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We have three items today. Per board protocol, each board member should strive for four minutes for initial comment, two for follow-up, for a total of 10 minutes. So let's proceed to item number one, construction change order. And today we have Director Ross, if you're ready, sir.
Yes, sir, I am.
Thank you. Proceed.
Yes, good afternoon to the board members, Superintendent, Attorney DePree Bruno. My name is Frederick Ross, Executive Director of Operations, Capital Planning and Project Management, here today for our March 2023 change order report. I have the change order report in front of you. The memo portion highlights the three separate areas, the direct material purchases, that's where they make a change order for tax savings that their district is receiving by ordering their materials directly. Non-direct material change orders, those are different change orders on this one. These were actually owner savings coming back to the district, and then the contingency adjustments. I'll move down to the details of that change order report, showing the different projects and the specific materials or reasoning for those change orders. I think highlight would be that middle section of those change orders. Again, those are projects being closed out and owner savings coming, being deducted, coming back to the school district as savings. And I'll take any other questions on the memo or the report.
Superintendent, any comments or questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Board, do we have any questions, comments, thoughts? Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so I see the Cristel. There's, is that an increase in the roofing materials purchase for Fort Myers Technical College?
No, what that is, is we will deduct that from the Cristel's PO, and then we'll buy that material directly, being able to save on the taxes.
Okay, okay.
So what you see is the amount we actually purchased in the tax savings.
Just, so it's just a tax report? Okay. And then the, under contingency adjustments, Franklin Park. So how large is that contingency account? Or how large is the contingency amount for that particular project?
I don't have that exact number on that. I can get that number for you. But definitely in those larger scale projects, they contain a little more contingency and able to move things around. So this was a result of the entire contingencies throughout the project. And as it says, it's getting dispersed to the proper contract line from where that contingency came from.
No, I understand. It's just an unusually large number. Usually you see smaller numbers. And I see what you're saying is you've aggregated several? Is that what makes it different?
Correct. And I can get you the details behind that if you need.
That's all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments or questions? Good? Okay. Thank you, Director Ross. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to move on to item number two, 2023-2024 Code of Conduct for Adult Students, pre-briefing. And we will have Dr. Duncan, Director Mangan, and Coordinator Scott. And I also want to say congratulations to newly achieved doctorate for Dr. Duncan. Proceed when you're ready.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to start with the adult code of conduct. There are very minimal changes for the adult code of conduct for this year. The first two are on page five. They're the inclusions of the Board Policy 1.28 Ethics in Education and Statement in Regards to FERPA. The other change is over on page 13. It's the addition of the larceny and theft and the definition that goes with it. In speaking with Director Everly, on behalf of Mr. Peace, Mr. Rozell, and Mrs. Davis, they had no other changes. They feel that the code is working well for them and is meeting their needs.
Mr. Superintendent, do you have any comments or questions?
I know that you've had an opportunity to be pre-briefed by these wonderful leaders of our school district and an opportunity to get the code of conduct, and so you wouldn't see it for the first time here today. We'd open up to any questions you may have regarding the adult code of conduct. And again, specifically that applies to our technical college, as well as our adult and career education, as well as the public service academy.
Thank you. Board members, questions, comments? Ms. Jordan?
I would just like to say thank you for spending all the time with us to explain everything and get all my questions answered. So thank you for that.
Ms. Juvenelli?
Thank you, and also thank you for the time you spent with me, because it was way more than you should have, probably. So thank you. I don't know if anyone else received an email, but we had concern, oh, well, not an email, I'm sorry. There's, we had an article about the phones and the students' phones.
Juvenelli? Yeah, we're on the adult portion right now, so sorry.
Well, they can still look at the phones for any, doesn't matter. It's the same, right? Meanwhile, even under, okay, so that's the question. So as an adult, are you, can you, if you have suspicion about something or have been told something, can you take an adult's phone? Thank you.
When individuals enter particular school buildings, district administrators have something called reasonable suspicion. We do not need probable cause. A law enforcement officer would need probable cause, both for phones and for backpacks. This is not a new item. I know that it's come up, but I think what the community needs to hear is that the aspect of searching a student's backpack, adult student or one of our K-12 students, or searching their cellphone, is only done under cases of reasonable suspicion. We never randomly collect backpacks. We never randomly collect phones and just go through them. You would need to be able to prove reasonable suspicion. I'll give you, for instance, you have received through other students, a text message or a social media post that has been attributed, and you can track it back to a particular student at that point. And I will use the word "safety," if it compromises the safety or the operation of the building, whether it be a technical college or a K-12 institution, then you have a responsibility as the administrator to make sure that you do your due diligence and you examine those cellphones, or in the case of somebody is carrying something today, I believe they may have drugs, or alcohol, or a weapon, that's enough for an administrator to begin to look into a backpack. I would like the public also to know that there's a reason why sometimes when we're working with reasonable suspicion, especially when it comes to weapons or drugs, that we make sure the police officer comes with us, because it's vital for our administrators to have, and the students, to have protection. Just because I walk into a classroom doesn't necessarily mean that student is going to just comply. We want to ensure that if something were to occur, that the proper level of law enforcement is also present with us. Cellphones are a little bit different. Cellphones are normally searched by our employees, and only if there's a legal matter, like the exchange of pornography, sexting, only when there's a criminal situation would it then be turned over to law enforcement, and law enforcement then has the higher standard of probable cause.
And thank you very much for that, because I think it's really important that the community is aware that we take safety as a number one priority, and it's safety at all levels. And it doesn't matter, when you're in our schools, we want them to be safe, feel safe, and we're going to do the best to keep them safe. So I just, I really appreciate that, Dr. Berner. You explained it great, because I think the suspicion, and they have, people have to know that, when they enter our buildings, we're going to do everything possible to keep our children safe. Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Yeah. My apologies for cutting off, Ms. Juvenelli. Thank you for asking the question. Any other board members? I'm going to ask as well, Ms. Patrica on the phone, if she has any questions or comments.
Yeah, sir, I do have questions, but I was going to wait until the K-12 code of conduct, because that's where the issue surrounding phones exists. Or do you want me to ask them now?
... things up here about it. So anyone else have any questions or comments for the adult section at the moment? Okay. I have none on the adult section. Thank you. We're moving on to item three, 2023-2024 Code of Conduct for Students. Please proceed.
So today, we will be going through several areas, starting with our legislative requirements, talking to you about the input we've gathered from various stakeholders, some areas that we are including, as well as some that we are reducing or deleting based on stakeholder feedback. We will also be presenting the new internet landing page to you, along with some proposed modifications to the existing document. Finally, we will be talking about our next steps related to the code of conduct, and then stop to get your discussion and feedback.
Our legislative requirements, the code of conduct is mandated from statute 1,006.07. It's where a lot of the guidance from the state originates, we're having the code of conduct. So that's been on the books for a number of years. However, the new rule is the emergency rule that you see up on the slide, and that is an active link for, if you want to review it in detail. Essentially, what it means is of the 26 Cessar violations that are listed in the code of conduct, 22 of them require mandatory reporting to the SRO on campus. The four that do not are bullying, harassment, sexual harassment, and tobacco. They're not mandatory, but it doesn't, the statute states it doesn't preclude you from discussing that with the law enforcement. When we do report, we also have to report anything that has one of the seven related items, and those are drug-related, alcohol-related, weapons-related, gang-related, hate-crime-related, hazing, or injury-related. Any incidents which may happen, maybe it's a disruption on, I'm sorry, disruptive action in the classroom that results in an injury, even in a minor one, we would be required to report it to law enforcement, even though the violation of the code of conduct is a local code. So that's, you know, just distinguish between the requirement and the related items in the new rule. We do have inside of our current reporting system, in our focus, back in January, the application services individuals updated it to reflect the guidance from the state. So when we do report into the law enforcement, we are also capturing the report of what happened, whether it was an arrest, a diversion program, an involuntary examination, sometimes referred to as the Baker Act. No law enforcement action taken. It is possible that if you report it and they determine that it's a school-related event, and consequences should be handled there. There's a code for that. Other law enforcement actions, something like that, might be a civil citation, which is not an arrest, but it is still an action. And then there is a code for not reported to law enforcement, if you're dealing with one of those four that is not required, or maybe a local code that doesn't have one of those related items I was just discussing.
So when working on the code this year, we wanted to make sure that we got input from a variety of groups, to include students, administrators, the community, parents. So we have, starting in January, working with our student advisory, all the way up through April, have been working with our community groups, DAC, our District Advisory Council, our student advisory, EDAC, the NAACP. We've worked with our principals and assistant principals at all levels, worked with our deans, met with the students, as we've done historically at Success Academy, and then also with TALK and Spalk. So this just outlines our timeline for our community meetings and the input that we've gathered from each group. That input has been extremely valuable. We've been able to take something back from each group, and as we move forward to talk about those changes, we can tell you some of the things that came across loud and clear from each of the groups that we've been able to add into the code or adjust based on that feedback.
There are two additions to include in the code of conduct based on advice from legal services. FERPA is one of a notice to students and families, Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, as well as your Board Policy 1.28 Ethics in Education. So those have been included.
Last year, when we presented to the board, we received guidance in two major areas. One, that the code of conduct needed to be slimmed down on the number of pages, and also that we went to take advantage of things like, technology-based items like links and QR codes. Inside this code, you'll see, especially when you pull out the redline items, that the code has shrunk almost two and a half, as it sits right now, the number of pages. And there has been an emphasis placed on using those links and QR codes. And there's also been reduced a lot of the visuals and graphics and pictures as well.
So I would say that was one of the things we did hear from each group, was that the code as is, is lengthy, and includes some things that maybe we could consider to omit as we went through, some things that maybe didn't need to be directly in the code. The QR code really gave parents and community members and school an option to dig in deeper if they wanted to in that area without lengthening the actual code.
Our current code of conduct is located on our district internet site, and there is a page where you scroll down and select which book you want to look at, whether it's the primary, or, excuse me, the elementary book or the secondary book. So if you open it up, then you will open up a PDF document. This is our secondary, and it is 108 pages. For this next year, we will be printing the book, as we traditionally have, but in addition to that, we will have something called a landing page. Priority Marketing has been working with us on a landing page. So this video gives you a little bit of a highlight of what they are working on. It would not have two buttons to push. We'll talk about that in a moment, but you would select the code of conduct, and then it would have different headings to go along with the table of contents. And you select those pieces, and then the additional information would pop down underneath. One of the great benefits of this is that you can look at this in many different languages. Currently, we print in Haitian Creole, Spanish, and English. This opportunity would afford us that translation in many other languages, in addition to the three that we print. Much more user-friendly, easy to access on your cellphone or iPad, if you do not have a computer as well.
So one of the biggest modifications is that there will no longer be two separate books for elementary and secondary. There will be one book that has a section for elementary and a section for secondary. We did decide to keep them separate to ensure we were aligned with state statute, but they are in one book. So in order to make sure that that book wasn't too large, we then did some of the things that we talked about before, moving information to the QR code. If there was information that could be found in several other areas, so if it was located in the parent portal, that might be a better place for parents to get it if it was not directly related to discipline. So there were some areas we just removed, because there were several other ways for parents to get that information. So that is one thing that we did. We also updated all of the Cessar definitions. Those were updated by the state in January, so we made sure to make all of those changes. Another significant change was we reversed the levels. So previously, our Level 1 was our least significant incident, and for the state, it was their most significant. So we have flipped ours so that they are more aligned with DOE. So that will take a little bit of getting used to. I think in the long run, it makes a lot more sense, as we're talking about Cessar versus local codes, for them to be more aligned. We've also put all 45 infractions in alphabetical order. Previously, we had a section for our local codes and a section for our Cessar codes, and they were separate. So if you were in one area, you might not have thought to go to the other area. Now they're all together alphabetically, and if it's a Cessar definition or Cessar code, it is bolded, and it also has those asterisks that say what level it is. So that's how it denotes if it's a Cessar incident. Along with that, we've gone in and made some adjustments to some of the areas. So where it might have said "first" and "repeated," some of those are now changed from "minor" to "major." So for a peer conflict, instead of saying "it's just your first time," or "you've had multiple," now, you know, we're recognizing that it could be a minor peer conflict, or it could be a more significant peer conflict. And that's to make sure that we are able to more closely follow the Cessar definitions for fighting and some of those things that we've discussed in some previous briefings. Additionally, for fighting, we've, you know, expanded some of those definitions. It's still "fighting," but for a first fight, if there were some other factors, like there was pre-planning involved, or there were students who inserted themselves into an existing fight, those were factors that could also be looked at by an administrator who is considering consequence for a student for that infraction. We deleted the glossary. What we found is that there was just a lot of repetition, so it was just extra pages at the end. All of the things that are in the glossary are spelled out very clearly within the book, under the alphabetical order of the infraction. And then for next steps. So we're here at our first board briefing. We will come before you for another board briefing for our second view on June 13th. After that, we anticipate it coming to a board action meeting for approval. Once approved, we will continue on with our translations in Spanish and Creole for our printed drafts, and then move forward with final formatting for the print versions. And during that time, make sure that they are ADA compliant, and then we will send printed versions to the school. Each school will get some supply of the printed versions for families who may need, for a variety of reasons, a printed version, as opposed to the electronic copy. So at this time, I'd like to open it up for any comments. Superintendent comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Duncan. Really appreciate the work of your team, as well as the countless individuals who lie behind your work to make this happen. You spoke very poignantly about all the opportunities you provide, to ensure that people have the opportunity to input into the code, long before it comes to all of you. But you are the final voice, as a board. We want your input related to the Code of Conduct. No document is ever completely perfect. This has gone through some serious restructuring, to align itself with CESSAR. Too many acronyms in education, my apologies. And I look forward to your discussion, because this will give our team the opportunity, that if our revisions or changes that you would like to see, this is that opportunity for us to have that chance, just like with policies, to go back, make the rewrites, and bring it back to you for an additional workshop, and then final approval. So thank you. Thank you to the team as well. And, Mr. Mangan, thank you for joining us today. You know, I have some amazing responsibilities, not only here at the central level, but also back at a middle school, and we appreciate your help and support to this team, for this critical work. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Board members, comments, questions? Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. Thank you again. Okay, so my questions are, and this is great, and as I said earlier, that, you know, you spend a lot of time speaking, but I think the fighting was interesting, because the definition of fighting versus peer conflict is something that is kind of new, I think, to all of us, what we perceive to be a fight. And just making sure that consistency, that across the district, that everybody, I mean, because one school can be different than the other school, and we all know that, so I would hope that in looking at all this and going through everything, that we make sure that, it doesn't matter what school we're in, we're following the same guidelines for, you know, what the rules are regarding the student Code of Conduct. And then, and I know that we always have, well, the last couple of years has been kind of iffy with the signatures, and how do we, and I think that was before Dr. B., I'm sure it was, but how do we ensure that parents are signing, so we're not months down the road, and they go, "How did this get in here? Because we didn't see this, we didn't sign that." So how do we make that happen? Do we have some kind of measure to make sure that we are getting the signatures, whether, because I know there's multiple ways for them to receive this, and, but I think that just knowing the past and what has happened, I don't know, do you have a solution for that?
Let me start with the first question you had about consistency between the schools. Consistency is something we always strive for. Additionally, this year, not only during the weeks that we train assistant principals, principals, and now athletic directors, since they're administrators, the Code of Conduct will be a part of that professional development, but that following day, or the day after, we have, in combination with our legal team, created a, what we call the Law Docket. I would call it Legal 101. One of the expectations there, and I'm sure Mr. Mangan and Jessica Duncan and other people will be presenting, they will be talking about consistency in approach to not only just the Code of Conduct, but to disciplinary responses. We need to make sure that we're following due process with all of our students, collecting the right amount of statements, as students name witnesses, that we follow up with witness statements, and making sure that if a student says, "I would like student X, Y, and Z to testify on my behalf in a written form," that we get to students X, Y, and Z, and we provide that student, as well as all the other witnesses who are party to the incident, that we get that information. Where there will be some nuances, sometimes comes around the penalty that a particular student will serve. You have to take into account repeated offenders, versus somebody who's maybe offended for the first time, and that's what I do like about our code. It does provide our administrators the opportunity to look within a range of penalties or consequences, and to choose what might be best. Not everything deserves 10 days out of school. I encourage administrators to look, when they do suspend, where's a natural break? Like, so right now, if something were to happen, we have Memorial Day as Monday, so maybe instead of five days, which would push into a Tuesday suspension, you look for the natural break. Maybe we just use Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we allow the weekend to occur, bring it back. There are other cases where the five days is absolutely necessary. So, we will be consistent, we will be training this summer in early June, it's the first week, it's after we get back from the Florida School Boards Association, I think it's the second full week in June, we'll be doing significant training with our principals, assistant principals, and A.D.s, and then they'll have follow-up training with our legal team, as well as multiple departments from within this central office, that will be going over ESE compliance, law compliance, you know, it's just really to bring everybody up to speed. And guess what next year will be? Next year will be Legal 102, and then there'll be a 103, and eventually, we'll get to the 400 graduate level, and just start to differentiate. So we're excited about that. As to how we collect signatures, I will turn that over to the team, but I think that ask for consistency, I wanted to make sure we responded to that.
So we do collect signatures as part of the Focus Parent Portal. When they go in and do their beginning-of-the-year paperwork, they're asked to sign that they've reviewed the Code of Conduct, that that part. It's also a process that we've highlighted for our training this summer with our administrators, where we will go over both the parent and student acknowledgement, and also the administrative responsibilities for reviewing the code with all students, who come either at the beginning of the year, or those students who might come in during the year, who missed that beginning-of-the-year opportunity.
Okay, yeah, and I appreciate all that, but I'm just going back and remembering what transpired, when parents felt that they did not see that, nor signed anything, and then the schools weren't sure how many parents actually signed their, you know, signed off on the book, or not signed off on the book. So I just think that I would, I don't know if there's a way that we can really hone in on that, so that moving forward, that we're not going to have people coming, a lot of people coming and saying that they did not know about whatever's in the book, the handbook, because it would behoove them to read their child's handbook. I mean, I know I always read this stuff, and I feel that they all should, people should read it, but we know that's not going to happen. So how do we get the most of them to do that?
So we can talk to Dr. Bernier after this, about some ways to push more messaging out to parents. However, it is in the parent portal, so it is an expectation for every parent at the beginning of the year to update their student's paperwork. They are sent messaging out to the schools. We go to a number of community events with our computers, and make sure that parents who are at those events can access the computer, and can get support if they're not familiar or comfortable with the portal. But it is part of the expectation that parents update that paperwork for their children, which includes all of their health information, clinic, all of that other important information as well. So it is part of that, and a report can be pulled from that for a school, so there is a way to find out who has or hasn't signed.
Perfect. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Oh, and Mr. Mangan showed, open house is another way that we make sure that we push that information out, and again, have computers available for parents for the portal at that time.
Thank you.
Okay. Comments, questions, board? I know Ms. Patrica had a question as well. Ms. Patrica?
Sir, thank you. I've got several comments. The first is, to your point, Chair Fisher, Dr. Duncan does have a really nice ring to it. Congratulations, Dr. Duncan, that is a huge accomplishment, and I'm grateful that we have you at the district with that additional knowledge. I want to thank the entire staff, all of those seated at the table, and others that work behind the scenes, for the thoughtful changes that you've made to the code, based on community input. That's the key here, right? We listen to the community, what do you want, what do you like, what don't you like, and we try to accommodate that to the greatest extent possible. Some love the length of this code. Some believe that by having so much information in the code, we have left nothing to chance, and everything is explained thoroughly. Others hate it, they say important information is sort of lost in the length of it. That being said, I believe we have struck the most appropriate balance possible, to the point that Ms. Jordan was just making. And I know, Dr. Duncan, you and I discussed this a bit in our one-on-one, can we change the language where parents sign? I expressed to you some concern that we're kind of setting parents and families up for an untrue statement, by having them sign something that says, "I have reviewed the Code of Conduct." Instead, could we have something along the lines of, "I am in possession of the code, and as such, I have imputed knowledge of the contents therein," or something along those lines? Just something to think about, and perhaps discuss with the superintendent. My final set of comments is regarding the phone issue. I've had at least one constituent reach out to me with concerns about the searching of a phone. Dr. Bernier, you talked about a couple of different, or several different scenarios. So, reasonable suspicion for a social media post. I think the law, I think the Fourth Amendment would allow us to search a student's phone under those circumstances, perhaps. But reasonable suspicion for drugs might not be acceptable, because drugs don't exist inside a cellphone. So the Fourth Amendment, the line, we might be crossing a line, if we, you know, have reasonable suspicion that a child is in possession of drugs, or paraphernalia, or a weapon, or something on campus, none of those things can be found in the phone, so is it legally justifiable to search a phone under those circumstances? There are several Fourth Amendment cases out there that are persuasive, not mandatory, because they come from other jurisdictions, and there is a significant difference between a violation of school policy and reasonable suspicion of violation of the law. So I guess what I'd like is, I would feel more comfortable approving the code with that language in it, if we had a legal analysis, that takes into account those cases that are out there, again, in other jurisdictions. And also, I'd like to know what we're doing with staff, to make sure that they don't cross a line into a violation of Fourth Amendment, to make sure that, you know, we're doing this correctly. Do any of my questions make sense? It's tough to tell on the phone, and not being able to see anyone's face.
Let me separate, because I was talking really about two issues. There's the first, there's a physical search of a backpack, and that's when I was referring to drugs, weapons, and other things. However, if text messages are sent, saying, "I'm in possession, please come by from me," and those, that information is then forwarded to an administrator, or a student says, you know, student X is offering me the opportunity to come to the bathroom and purchase things, we have a responsibility to do our due diligence, and at that point, search a phone, because that text message is attributable to a student, and it builds our case for what they may or may not be doing. So I don't want to cloud the issue by comparing a physical search of a backpack, which we've done for years, and I want it to be known to you, and to all the board members in our community, the searching of phones, we have been doing. It was in our code last year, it was in our code the year before that. This is not new language, and it is aligned to the Fourth Amendment. We would not just simply, because somebody tells me there's a weapon in a backpack, does not mean I would then search the phone. I want to make sure that's clear. We'd search the backpack. If there was electronic messaging, social media posts, other things that impacted the safety of our students and our greater community, then we have a responsibility to ensure for the safety of our students, and we can operate in searching a phone under reasonable suspicion in those cases. How we will train the staff will be part of, not only the training in June, when they meet on the academic side, to talk about academics and expectations, we will also then follow up that same week with Legal 101 training, where the information regarding the Code of Conduct and its enforcement will be covered, and I'm sure the legal team will cover that particular amendment, and where our lines begin, and where they stop. But I will also ask, if legal counsel wishes, she may weigh in specifically on that, but I think it's really important for our community to understand, the search of a phone is not random. It would have to be very specific to electronic communication coming from that phone. We would see a reasonable suspicion trail of information, students approaching us, saying, "Look what I got." That would, that would give us the opportunity for reasonable suspicion, then to search the phone.
I wouldn't really add too much more to what you have said, Dr. Bernier, because you're exactly correct in terms of what the law says. I'll just simplify it just a little bit, in terms of why we do it, and what's the basis and behind the reasonable suspicion. It comes from a Supreme Court case that's pretty old, from 1985. In that case is the one that says that school districts do not have to have probable cause, and do not need warrants to be able to search. School districts can search based on reasonable suspicion. And there's two prongs to that test. The first one is that the search must be justified at its inception. So before I even search, I need to know, or have a reasonable suspicion, that something has happened that justifies that search. I have a text message where there is a threat, and kids are passing it around, so I have something from the inception that allows me to do the search. And then the second prong, which applies to everything, from backpacks, to lockers, to cellphones, is that the search must reasonably relate in its scope to the circumstances that prompted it. So I can't go beyond what initially gave me that reasonable suspicion. So for the audience, for the community members, board members, the school district will not go on fishing expeditions on cellphones. It has to be something that is justified from its inception, and narrowly tailored to whatever justified that inception for us to do the search.
Anything else, Ms. Patrica?
Yes, so I do have some cases that I will send to the board, of course, for information purposes only, with no reply to me, so that the Attorney Jeffrey Bruno and Dr. Bernier can see and understand where my concerns lie. I hear everything you just said, and I agree with everything you just said. I just, I'm concerned about some of the case law that's out there. So that's it on the phones, and my final comment is this, on a different, but a related note, and a discussion that is for a different day, what are we doing to ensure that teachers are supported in their reported violations of the code? So if a student is sent to the office for some form of inappropriate behavior that violates the code, are those teachers being supported, or are the students sent back to class with little to no intervention? My final statement is that that is a common complaint that I hear from teachers. Thank you so much, those are my comments.
Okay. Other board member comments, questions? Ms. Juvenelli?
Thank you. And I would actually agree with Ms. Patrica. We do get a lot of comments where the teachers feel like they're not supported, or that the student goes to, you know, the principal's office, and then they come back, right back to class. So I appreciate Ms. Patrica for bringing that up, and I understand, also, I think she's concerned that we could be challenged legally regarding the phone. Go ahead, I think, are you saying?
Go ahead and answer.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, you had your hand there, so I was like, okay. So I think that is, I think that's the concern, is, but obviously, we could be challenged on anything that we do, so, I mean, I guess it's gonna, it could happen, it does happen, right? So I think that's one of the things that Ms. Patrica's bringing up, and I appreciate that. One of the things that I actually have for you guys is the Equity Guide. Is there an Equity Guide, or is it gone completely? What's the status on that piece, that was in the Code of Conduct a few years ago? I know that could come back up, and so I'd like to address that. And then, one of the things that has been brought up a couple times, regarding the receipt of the Code of Conduct, and the parents receiving that, is there any way that they could get an email, maybe, once they've opened it, and that they've received it, and that then there's an email trail on our end, as well as their end? Because we know that they're going to say they didn't see it when they did see it, or they had opportunity to see it, because it's just, it's inevitable. There will always be one. So that would be something that I would recommend, is, you know, is like I said, like a email receipt back, that they know that they get, and that we also get a copy somewhere, I don't know if it's at the level of the school, but something like that. And that's it. Thank you so much for all your hard work, I appreciate it.
So, Mr. Chair, and Ms. Juvenelli, that is an excellent suggestion. I watched several people nod their heads, including me. That's a very unique approach to sending a read receipt email. We probably have that capacity, I'm not quite sure exactly how we'll do it, but I saw everyone nodding their heads, thinking, wow, it's a really amazing way to approach this, because it would give us, it would give us a digital record. Because taking possession of the Code of Conduct is different than people who used to take the possession of the Code of Conduct. They used to get handed a physical book, so now, so we have to find an electronic way, that's an excellent suggestion. That's an excellent suggestion. I'm sorry, I lost the other question in the process of that response. The Equity Guide does still, thank you. The Equity Guide still does exist. It's known as the Civil Rights inequity guide. It is still, is still a living document, and it is still now, instead of being included directly in the Code of Conduct, it's one of the QR, one of the links to, because it is a separate document from our Code of Conduct. So it does still exist. I know Mr. DePree Bruno had a response as well.
I just wanted to add a little bit more to the discussion, because these questions about the cellphone search is very, very fact-specific, and there's an analysis that you have to do. For example, if I am in class and the teacher says, "Put your phone away because you're now taking a test," and I take my phone out, that's a violation. I can take the phone from the student, but that does not get to the next level for me to be able to search that phone, right? That's what we're talking about, those two prongs. Or if I am in class and there's a test going and there seems to be some type of communication on me using my phone, then perhaps not only do I have justification, reasonable suspicion, to take the phone, but also look at the phone to see whether or not there was any cheating or anything like that that's going on. So these are very, very fact-specific. To Ms. Patrica's point, there are a lot of, not a lot, but there are some cases that deal with very fact-specific issues. The analysis always starts with a two-pronged test, and then from there you move forward and you see where it's going to fit in terms of the legal exposure.
Okay. Board member comments, questions? Go ahead, Ms. Juvenelli.
What page is that? Is it in the Equity Guide or the Civil Rights Guide? Let me make sure. But I would like to see it. How do I get to see that?
So the Civil Rights Guide is in the parent portal under Equity. It's also in the Code of Conduct, and if you go to your red line, it is located under the section that says parental rights, early in the code.
Thank you.
And the link is there in the section for parental rights, and it is embedded in that as well.
Awesome. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay. Couple of things just from me. Appreciate discussion on the cellphone policy. Definitely brings me back to the courtroom a little bit with search and seizure, so I appreciate that. But again, reiterating, this is already a policy. We're just including it now in the Code of Conduct. In regards, that was a great suggestion from Member Juvenelli on the email. I will tell you as a parent through Focus that, to put it nicely, it certainly does nag you until you complete those tasks. So I've dealt with that point. So to that point, I appreciate so. And at least for my experiences, the homeroom teachers are very good on follow-up on that. So I hope every school is like that. I appreciate everyone's hard work in the Code of Conduct. I appreciate the pre-brief on it, one of the things that you brought up with streamlining. I appreciate that. I would, as I mentioned, like to see more of that going forward, but I definitely appreciate the progress on that point. So thank you for all your hard work, everyone. Okay. Okay. Moving on, next item we see, public comment. Attorney DePree Bruno, DePree Bruno, excuse me. Can you explain public comment, please?
Well, Mr. Chairman, there is no one signed up for public comment.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that has not signed up that wishes to make a public comment? Okay. Seeing none, next on the agenda is Good to the Order, and I will start with Ms. Juvenelli.
Actually, I just, I'm gonna just talk about really, and I know everybody will probably talk about it a little bit, but I know everybody's graduation weekend was probably awesome and great experience, and it was nice to see the kids, because they, you know, these students that are graduating today are the ones that began the pandemic. So, you know, they had interrupted education, and so between that and then the hurricane. So I think that it's exciting to see that we had, and I had a great weekend, busy, but great. That's really all I have. I think we attended schools, and so that's it. Thank you very much.
Ms. Patrica?
I wasn't ready, but I'm going to say the same thing. I had a great weekend, absolutely fantastic weekend with all the students and the schools. And the main thing for me were listening to the speeches that the kids were given and the hope that they had. And it made, it just made me feel so good when I was listening to them. I was going through my head, maybe I need to have a speech too. But they were just, they were just amazing, and I just feel very hopeful for our future, because they're gonna be taking care of us one day, I'm sure of that. And just everything that they're gonna do, I just, it was a great, great weekend. And that's all I have to say. And I really, another thing that I want to say too is how bad I feel for the family of the child that we lost. And just know that they're in my thoughts.
Mr. Persons?
I'm sure the child is in all our thoughts. That's really tragic. Besides, all the students shook close to 2,000 hands over the weekend. Hands a little sore, but the joy on their eyes and their smiles made it all worthwhile. A few principals also, it was their last time. And that was very emotional also. So it was graduation, happy and a little bit sad at times. That's all.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
I'm gonna save most of my comments for this evening, but yes, I commend the team that put the Code of Conduct together and getting this giant document condensed is gonna be very helpful to families and parents and being able to get through that and actually read it. I love the idea of a receipt read, some kind of confirmation number of showing that, yes, the document's been opened. So kudos to you there. Graduations were definitely great. I was able to attend, and I'll talk a little more later, but I was able to attend South Fort Myers High School. And they, speaking of, you know, moving to that technology era, they had a great idea, and I thought I would share it just in case principals are listening. But we received, Ms. Juvenelli was with me, and we received a postcard, and on that postcard was a QR code, and the QR code is what opened up the program. So grandparents could see it, even though you didn't have that paper in hand. So I thought that was such a great idea. So we're moving on into that, the future of technology, I guess. So, but other than that, I don't have anything. Yes, my prayers and thoughts to the family of the child that we lost over the weekend has been heavy for certain, but that is all I have for now. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
First comment is to say thank you to my colleagues for doing graduation. When graduations were originally scheduled, it was my intention to be out of town. Graduations were all scheduled when my schedule changed. So this is the first time in 10 or 11 years that I haven't done graduation. So thank you all for picking up my share of the load. I do have a couple of comments about things that I saw or participated in. I went to the Elementary String Builder Performance Concert, and I didn't realize this started, I thought it was brand-new, but it started two years ago. Apparently, music instructors were concerned that children were not picking up instruments at a young age, and they were concerned about, you know, just the future of music programs in the district. So they went out and they got these violins for these kids. There were two, I mean, there were two cellos and all the rest were violins. These kids played their music. There was no music for them to look at. They've been trained to play, I don't know how you do it, whether it's by ear or whatever it is, but when you go to see the regular performances, the kids all have the music. Nobody's looking at the conductor. They're all watching the music. And these kids, they played really, really well, and the enthusiasm. Just before the concerts start, while they were practicing, and then they went back to their seats and before they were called back up to start the concert, they were just sitting in their seats, playing their violins. They were just having a great time. So I just, I think that was a terrific investment, whoever paid for those violins. Kudos to you, and kudos to the district and to Mr. Tomaszewski and the music instructors in the various elementary schools. That was a lot of fun. I also took the opportunity to go to the AFT TAOK Teacher Leader Program presentation on May 15th. I know everybody was invited. I know staff was invited, and it was a very, very, very busy time. I was fortunate to be able to go. I just wanted to make some comments about it, because I think it's the first time they've done it, and frankly, I thought it was of value for board members and for staff. Basically, they took the position that they're stakeholders, so there were, I think, six teachers, there may have been more. They took the position that they're stakeholders in public education, and so they're gonna choose a public education issue. They chose, some of the issues chosen were vaping in schools, utilization of academic coaches and mentoring programs, the effectiveness of the last two. So they provided rationales for their research. They did the research. They provided variable options, conclusions, and then some solutions. And one of the solutions offered by a teacher, she said, "We should get the state to do this." And I was listening to her suggestion, and I raised my hand, and I said, "That's a great suggestion, but we don't need the state to do that. We can do that internally." So I suggested she meet with Shaq, because I think it was something she suggested on vaping that doesn't require any legislative action. It's just something we can do in the district. And then there were two good, actually, three good presentations on academic coaching and mentoring. I think they all involve surveys, but they sort of tackle the problems from different points of view. So I'm just suggesting to professional development that maybe you meet with these three teachers and get a sense of what it was they learned by collecting information from their colleagues. So it was, it was, it was really a good experience, and I learned stuff. So I'm just encouraging you, next year, if you have the opportunity, I think it really would be beneficial if somebody from staff and from the board showed up. I think you'd learn something. So those are my comments. And again, thanks, thank you, colleagues. I know I missed something. All right.
Okay. I'm gonna reserve most of my comments for tonight. Most everyone said everything graduations were great. My heart goes out to the family as well, the deceased student, so that really truly breaks your heart. So I'm gonna ask now if Dr. Bernier has any comments.
I just have a couple of things I think, for the Good to the Order, need to be addressed. One is a Facebook posting that went up specifically regarding one of our middle schools in particular. I would like to thank two board members for taking the opportunity to go out there, physically tour the building with the principal, and ensure that not those photographs, while accurate in depiction of certain conditions at certain times, that is not the current state of the building. We had two board members take it upon themselves, and I appreciate your communication with me. They walked the building with the principal. They were shown the areas. There are some areas where our maintenance team has gone out to look at some specific things regarding how water fountains are particularly attached to walls. Middle school children are, middle school children, I'll put it that way. I don't want to disparage middle school kids. I love them. But they are tougher on a building than high school and elementary school students. Therefore, I just, I want people to be aware that if that, they've seen that post, you know, specifically, there was a large student event in the gymnasium, all that trash being pushed into a pile was the cleanup. Yes, I think kids and parents and other people attending an event should be cleaner and more respectful. But I will also tell you, leaving graduation, I made it a point specifically to talk to the wonderful ladies at LECO who were responsible after every graduation for cleaning that entire arena as people left. They left lots of things behind, programs, water bottles, and other things. So, you know, in a perfect world, that would never happen, but I think it's important to address. The maintenance team has been out there and will continue to be a part of that. The principal is deeply involved in his school building and making sure that that stuff is, if it still exists, is being corrected. And when those things do occur, he was correcting them as quickly as possible. The other part I'd like to speak to is about graduations. Yes, we had an amazing weekend. Unfortunately, there was an event Saturday night, early Sunday, where we found out about the loss of a student. But I would also share that I think I owe the school district and this particular family, without naming them. We did have one student who, as they approached graduation, found out that they were potentially at least one full credit short. All of the stopgap measures that are put in place in order to ensure a senior doesn't experience that situation, we believe may have been followed, but we don't have all the documentation necessary to ensure that we are 100%. When one student can't cross the stage because we, I, I'll use the "I" statement, because I didn't get that job done, I will take responsibility for that and make sure that we work extra diligently to ensure all of our safeguards are followed by our administrators and our counseling staff to ensure that no family winds up in a situation where a few weeks before graduation they're informed, and they believe for the first time that their child is gonna be short a credit necessary to graduate. That child will still graduate. We have a plan in place, and we'll move that forward. But they were given the opportunity to walk, but there will be, there will be a need to complete that course prior to actually issuing the diploma. So, you know, I told you early on that if something happens, I'll own it. I'll own it. We've had a conversation with that particular site and their leadership, and we will take, this is an opportunity to remind all of our principals the importance of making sure as you go into senior year, you clarify and make sure that parents are fully and completely informed. Other than that, I'll save any additional comments for tonight. I just wanted to address those two issues since they were not addressed by the board.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Attorney DePree Bruno, do you have any comments?
I do not. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. We'll have a student performance tonight at 5:45, followed by a regular action meeting at 6 o'clock. Seeing no other business to come before this, board, this meeting is adjourned at 2 o'clock. Have a great day, everyone.